... lateness in coming out of the closed session. Trustee Handy, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam President, you have a quorum.
The first item on our agenda is the roll call.
Trustee Karen Weinstein. Trustee Linda Handy. Trustee Bill Withrow is not present. Trustee Nikki Gonzalez-Uen. Trustee Jolene Bonilla is not here. Trustee William Riley.
Present.
Trustee Meredith Brown.
Present.
Thank you.
The next thing on our agenda is the report of action taken in closed session. Trustee Handy, would you provide that report? Agenda items 6.1, 6.2, 12.2 have been removed from the agenda and will return to a future meeting. That's all we have. I don't have anything. Let's go. Madam President, there is no readout from tonight's closed session. This is a different. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. It appears as though we have two items that have been pulled from the agenda, item 6.1 and item 6.2. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda with those revisions?
I'll move that item. That's here.
It's been moved in second by trustee Riley and Handy. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion for approval of the minutes?
No approval. I'll second it.
It's been moved in seconded. Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda, the next very happy item on the agenda, is the swearing-in ceremony for our incoming student trustees. Can our student trustees please come up to the DAS? And can all of our trustees come down to the, I guess, is this the mosh pit? The center of the? Can the trustees' families, the families? And I have to give my apologies. I just landed from a trip to Washington DC and have not changed my clothes. So I'm gonna let trustee Handy will give the oath today. Oh, where's the, where's the, write the names in for me. I need names. There's no names. Are we all ready? Are we doing? Do you have anyone standing with you?
No.
Do you want to bring your friends with you? You want to?
Nope.
Okay, good. Okay. All right. He said he doesn't have anyone there. Okay. So you wanna, so we're raising your right hand? For the oath of office for student trustees. I, please say your name.
I, Ayesha Jordan.
Do solemnly swear to carry out my responsibilities as student trustees of the Peralta Community College District.
Do solemnly swear to carry out my duties as a student trustee for the Peralta Community College District.
Okay. All right. I'm gonna make it short this time. I do personally commit myself to convey
I do personally commit myself to convey
the concerns of the student body
the concerns of the student body
to the Board of Trustees
to the Board of Trustees
and to convey the concerns of the Board of Trustees
and to convey the concerns of the Board of Trustees
to the student body
to the student body
to the best of my ability.
to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Next, I'm touched. We've been to the pictures first. Photographs. Okay, who's taking the pictures for us?
Her.
Okay. Tamile, okay.
I'll do it.
Jeff?
Sure.
Jeff, are you filming this hour?
Yeah.
Please in some more. We're gonna get this together. Okay, use a couple cameras then hair drop. All right, Nikki, wouldn't be bad to see you. Thank you. Do we have any associated student government? Ah, yes, we do. Welcome.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and members of the public. Let me start out by introducing myself. I'm Danyacho Sabat. I go by Dag. I'm the new ASLC president for the 2018 to 2019 academic year. Thank you. So, let me just start out by explaining my history at Laney. I've been at Laney for two years. I'm a political science major. Within that two years, I've been ASLC Senator and ICC President. I've also started the Ethiopian-Etrian Student Union at Laney College. And as for my report, I don't really have much to say since we haven't had any meetings yet, but we do intend on having our first meeting between early July and mid-July. But other than that, we've been working with Garrett Albrey and all the Associate Student Presidents and the Directors to hold our district-wide training in the summertime. Other than that, all I have to say is I look forward to working with all the ASs and the trustees for this upcoming year to support student initiative. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the District Academic Senate Report. I'm sorry, the District Classified Senate Report. If we don't, do we have any other associated student government reports? Then Peralta Classified Senate Report. Mr. Bryce is not here? So I don't believe that we have a Classified Senate Report. Then we'll have the District Academic Senate Report.
Good evening, Madam President and our trustees, and welcome to our new student trustees. Looking forward to seeing you up there and hearing your voices and hoping that you will assert the voices of our students who are the integral parts of our Peralta community. So, welcome to the Board. And so, in advance, I apologize for this report being scattered and, to be honest, incomplete. As I was, but I, but in the hope of reflecting the past moment, the present moment, I've rewritten this report without a single bullet that was included in the original outline that I had at 5:00 this evening. As recently as 6:30 this evening, I've been in communication with other Senate Presidents about a response to a request from many faculty on behalf of matters on which the Senate Presidents represent faculty. We've been asked to take a really strong stance to assert the 10-plus-one to make our grievances known. Nothing that our colleagues have asked of me is unreasonable, and the information, the history of action and inaction informing their requests are indisputable by anyone looking beyond their judgment of any individual or group of individuals until the actual facts that strung together tell the story of how we've gotten where we are today. Unfortunate relationships and behaviors that make working extremely difficult. The Senate, the colleges, the district, our community has constantly been told that what is needed is around the corner, that we should orient ourselves to working together, that we should move forward and out of the past, that we should work collegially. These expressions suggest that a path to resolutions is being offered, but we are at a critical juncture in which many who are involved have felt for some time now, and others are beginning to feel that those expressions are euphemisms for weight. It's ugly because we don't want to look at it. We'd rather shoo or gavel or condescend to any dissenting voices and run a campaign of character exacerbation of individuals or group of individuals should they speak the truth that makes us uncomfortable. It makes the district look bad, we hear. We are airing our dirty laundry, we hear, but it doesn't have to be bad. It doesn't have to be the dirty laundry. We are not the situation we are in. We are our collective responses to the situation. The cut, and maybe this is an inappropriate metaphor, that is ignored while throwing blame at one another will leave a scar that is unsightly, but the cut that is tended to with urgency and intentional and deliberate attention can be healed. And while the skin may not be unblemished in the long run, neither will it be unsightly. It will stand as a proud scar, much like that scar many of us have from falling from a tree or a bike when we were younger, reminding us all of what we went through, the gains we made, and how we elevated one another and adhered to the integrity of our best selves to care for not just the cut, but the body of our community that received the cut. At this point, let's be frank. We are not operating too often and too frequently in a community, we are operating too often in a, and communicating in a cycle of waste rather than a cycle of value. I invite all of our Peralta community to participate in the Academy of College Excellence Training held each year at BCC for a better experiential understanding of this concept. But to be brief, in communicating in a cycle of value means that we communicate through accuracy, and accuracy is defined as the focus is on revealing facts and comparing explanations for value. When you are being accurate, you recognize that your perception is not reality. Asking fact-based questions help recover the cortex and shift out of bioreaction and into authenticity, where the focus is on clarifying essential purpose and revealing intersections for action. In authenticity, we demonstrate genuine appreciation for various views and factors, researching where they intersect, and for new insight and opportunity. Too often, and I will, I will stand before you and say, and perhaps this is me included, and this is not me pointing at anyone else, you know, as they say, you point one finger at someone, there are three others or four others pointing at yourself, but too often we are asserting our individual truth as so as to ignore or belittle the truths of others without a comprehensive and honest assessment of our collective truth. Tonight, I pledge that the DAS will work in good faith towards resolving not just the issues with our current tentative budget, but also our issues in working together collegially with our district and college administrators, our faculty, our staff, colleagues, as well as our students. So, with that, like I said before, this report is incomplete because I was writing it to the very moment that I was called, but I hope that in, that despite it being incomplete, that we also, I hope that I have communicated clearly how we are committed to working together to build the Peralta that our students deserve. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith.
I, before we go to public communication, I just would like to make a few comments. I know some of you are here tonight to talk about cuts having to do with our radio station, and I want to inform everyone that neither I nor anyone from my administration have made any plans to make any cut to the radio station. I have received emails, lots of emails, about the radio station, and I have no idea where the rumor started, who started it. I do have a meeting that's coming up with a representative from the radio station, so I look forward to learning more about it. If we've had any discussion about the radio station, it is that we want to make it more integral to the curriculum that we offer at Peralta, not to get rid of it, because an FM signal, if you can have one of those, it's a very precious commodity that you have. I was part of Trucking Meadows Community College in Reno, Nevada, and we tried for almost 20, 30 years to get a signal. We couldn't get, so I could not imagine that we have a signal at Peralta that we would let it go. So, I want to alleviate any fear of our radio station going away so that you all would know that. So, thank you.
So, trustee Handy, the next item is public communication, and would you please call those speaker cards? Can you all please line up in order? Jamie Kimber, Brenda Miles, Randy Lauderdale, and last name is, first name starts with a Q, last name is Scott, and Kai Yamamoto. You have two minutes each.
My name is Jamie Kimber. I attend Arinda Academy. I'm also a student with Martin Luther King Junior Freedom Center. I was coming up here today to talk about the radio budget, budgeting, and how if we do do the budgeting, how it will affect people in the community. By budget cutting, it causes the inability to communicate and further causes misunderstanding and misinterpretation, which lead, which later leads into, which later leads into preventing certain messages and to be conveyed as well as integrating certain cultures as well and languages. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Brenda Miles, and, hello, my name is Brenda Miles, and I'm an intern with the Martin Luther King Junior Freedom Center. Thank you for your assurance of the support for the Peralta College Community Radio, and hopefully the Freedom Center will be implemental in negotiating what curriculum for the radio in the community looks like in the future. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Randy Lauderdale. I attend Sedition and Truth Independent Study, and I am also a student of the Freedom Center. I would like to say thank you as well for continuing to fund the radio station. It's a very pivotal thing for us, for the community, so we really greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Before you start, young man, just a moment. Next, can I have David Gaines, please come forward, Yi Zhang, Baptiste Erves, Alden Halters, and Shar Poets. Okay, you have, it's your turn.
Good evening, my name is Kadir Scott. I attend Oakland Technical High School here in Oakland, California, and I'm also a student of the MLK Freedom Center. I was also coming up here to possibly speak on why the radio should be kept, the station should be kept, and the budget should actually fund it. I'm actually really happy to hear that it is and that it's here to stay, so, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Kay Yamamoto. I am a staff member at the Freedom Center, and we would like to thank the Board for its assurance of the safety and life of the radio station, and we hope to work with you closely on growing the influence and the power for the community with the radio station. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is David Gaines, and I am also a student of the Freedom Center, and I also want to mention that I am a recent graduate of Alameda Science and Technology Institute. And just so happened to be wearing the shirt of the school I will be attending, and thanks to your, yeah, thanks, yeah, on a scholarship, and thanks to the Asti, thanks to Asti, I will only have to, I will have junior standing when I attend American. So I just wanted to mention that before. And I cannot stress to you enough how important this radio station is to us because it's important that we have a voice for the people, and I just wanted to thank all of you for alleviating our fears and your continued support for the upkeep of this radio station because, as you all know, Eliu Harris started it, and Eliu Harris is a wonderful person, and we want to keep what he started alive, and just wanted to thank you guys for that. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Baptiste Stevens. I'm a student at Oakland Technical High School, and I'm also a student at the MLK Freedom Center, and I'd also like to say thank you for keeping the radio station alive. I think it's a really important voice in our community. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Shar Poets. I go to the Alameda Science and Technology Institute, and I'm a student at the Freedom Center as well, and I'm currently enrolled in the College of Alameda, so we would like to express our thanks for being able to keep the radio station up and how important it is as an aspect of our community. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Yi. Now, I am a student of Advanced Microscope Program student at the Mary College. I give you a little bit of my background. I have been working in science field in both academic and biotech industry for over 30 years, and a long time ago, I already noticed the microscope is the key of the science, and I have been looking for the place to learn it systematically for years. Fortunately, I founded Mary College offers this, and this is the only community college offers this program in Northern California, as far as I know. And I recently, I have, I have three more courses to complete this advanced micro, Florence Microschool Certificate, and this summer, the school supposed to offer these three courses, and suddenly, we heard the budget cut, and those courses is cutted. We are so sad about this decision, and this program, you know, this program is supports so many students to find job in the, in the academic, in the biotech company, and also in the healthcare, in the hospital. And recently, two months ago, I interviewed in several company in recent six months, and I lost it just because of this skill, and I always talk to the professors about this, how important it is, and also recently, two months ago, I interviewed in Stanford Medical School, and because they, I, this surprise, they, I really impressed them, this program really impressed them, and unfortunately, they want me to finish this program, then they can, they can hire it. So I wish the district to continue to support this program, and we really appreciate the district over the years to support and funding this program. Thank you.
All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Aldane Walters. Again, thanking the Chancellor for assuring us that the radio station survives. I go to Berkeley City College, and while, while giving thanks, I would just like to impress upon you or just to share some of the benefits of this radio station, at least as far as I saw. I hope I can pass these around. I recently started, recently started a show called Feel Alright. Since I was 12 years old, I knew I wanted to be in the media. Started with internships in Jamaica in TV and in print, being employed at a major TV station by age 19. One thing I didn't have was radio experience, and so when I came to BCC, saw the ad, oh, join KGPC, and then I met Katie, and she's like, oh, you can totally do a radio station. I'm learning so much about developing this critical aspect of the media. Every month, my show is First Fridays, everybody can tune in, First Friday, since we still have a station. First Friday is my family in Jamaica and my community from work, from school, everyone is tuning in and having like in a community, listening to something from outside of our district. Peralta is going to the world to share positive vibes, to share positive messages. So it's not just a little, as I would say in my Jamaican term, or a small thing for the district or for, or to serve the East Bay and Peralta Colleges. We are serving the world. I have people calling me from everywhere because I have a call-in show. So, just to assure you, this is an excellent place where not only media students can learn things, I can put that on my resume and all that, I'm learning radio, but this is something that is impacting people around the globe since we have internet and all these things that we can supplement it. Thank you so much.
Next, we have Reniek Colvin, I believe it is, Emily Tricia Lopez, Erin Harbor, Florence Wiley, Florine, I'm sorry, and I know Florine Wiley, Florine Wiley. And Dr. Roy Wilson. Could you all please come forward?
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Reniek Colvin. I am a former student at Laney College, and I am a DJ at KGPC Oakland.
A little closer.
I'm a DJ at KGPC Oakland. I came here today with the speech prepared to humbly ask you guys to preserve the radio station, and now that, that is no longer in question. I want to thank you for your support and encourage you to continue to push that support towards this, this gem of an opportunity that really does benefit the students, staff, and community members in Oakland. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Emily Tricia Lopez. I'm a member of the community. Just wanted to come here and support the radio station. Thank you to all the Chancellors here that are assuring that they're going to continue to support the station. I want to speak a little bit around why I believe the radio stations should continue to be supported. I was actually interviewed on the station with Katie, with Oakland Bikes Radio Show, and for me, as a young queer Chicana with a lens on, you know, indigeneity and intersectional feminism, mainstream media and corporate media won't give me that platform, but your radio station gave me the platform to talk about my experiences, right, and to bring other young queer and trans folks with me, that are also single, single mothers, single gender non-conforming folks as well, to speak on their experience in the world. And we focused on recreational equity and bicycles, and how do we get more women, queer, trans folks of color on bikes, right? How do we get them picking up a wrench as well? So I think it was very inspiring and motivational to be able to share that, because I know I'm not the only one out there that wants to continue to ride bikes. They use these tools as healing, as empowering tools, so thank you to Peralta College, and thank you to the radio station for that support.
Good evening, my name's Erin Harbor. I've been working at the Peralta Colleges radio station for nearly a decade. I started long ago when it was ninth-floor radio located at the Laney Tower, and the ninth floor, like this windowless kind of bunker above ground in the tower over there. And I've listened to college radio my whole life. It's something I'm dedicated to. It was always a dream of the station to get an FM license, and working the entire time and dreaming that became an opportunity for us to get a low-power FM license. The FCC is very sparing with these, and we managed to get an FM station now. So now we're at 96.9 FM. KGPC broadcasting over the FM radio right from across the street here, 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM, and 24/7 online. When my contract, which I've been getting a contract renewed every year for just shy of a decade, was presented with the meeting to become on the agenda to go to this meeting, the person who presented it to get my contract here to hopefully get me paid as of July first, was told that I had been, the decision had been made to have no more contractors, and that she was to cease and desist even presenting, me having a contract, full stop. And that was the end of the conversation. Since then, there have been no conversations from anyone with our department. We had a manager, who's our former manager is here, of the department, and we've had a kind of a power vacuum. Initially, there was some effort to find out from our department, from the marketing department, which does lots of things around the four campuses and here at the district, what we needed as a, as a community of employees to do our job well. And that was great, but nothing's come of it. The chancellor, I know you're in charge of the department, and you're a very busy person. It's, we've been operating in a complete lack of communication, coupled with looking at the budget, and that's where we saw that all the money that pays the contractors that run the station had been cut, or the majority had been cut. Not only that runs the radio contractor, I know I'm out of time, but also a gentleman named Joe, who films things all around the district, sometimes does these board meetings. Our jobs are late at night most of the time, because our radio station runs over the air live, seven PM to seven AM. So a lot of this work, and including the work from Joe, is contractor work. So, yeah, that's, that's where the feeling that the station is going away. All the money went away, and my contract was just cut. So that's, yeah, that's, that's my bit. Thank you.
Did I turn it off? Okay. Can we have Karen Steyer come up, Richard Thwell, Jennifer Sienowski, Isaac Schlossman, and Claire Porter all come into the queue? Ms. Wiley?
What if there was this wonderful radio station channel that connected with its listeners? What if nobody knew such a resource existed? What if somebody needed this, somebody who was ignored by the mainstream media and needed to get the word out about their art program, their music concert, their art exhibition? What if you heard such a thing existed and it's gone? What? I never even had a chance to get to know it. What if you had the power to change the ending of that story? My name is Flo Wiley. I grew up here in Oakland, California. I'm a graduate of Cal State Hayward, now Cal State East Bay. I am a seasoned marketing professional, having produced successful revenue generating campaigns for the Apollo Theater, the San Francisco International Film Festival, Harlem Community Radio, among many others. I'm a broadcast veteran, having produced and hosted my own show for thirteen years in New York, Black Beat New York. And for the last two years, I've proudly broadcast on Peralta Colleges Community Radio, Black Beat Bay Area. I am here to support, thank you chancellor, the continuing existence of Peralta Colleges Community Radio. Non-commercial radio is a critical voice for diversity in this, our era of too much sameness. Instead of reducing our budget so that we do less, I'm glad that you are considering better connections with the colleges in the district. Community information resource for underserved communities, which is what one of my previous speakers, the previous speakers referred to. KGPC is a community resource for the arts, for sports, for health, for social justice. We have the opportunity to be a resource partnering with recognized agencies for emergency information. There are revenue opportunities. I encourage you to preserve this resource, to activate the partnerships, to realize our mutual goals, to treasure this broadcast ownership opportunity. I want to work with you, and I'd like for this station really and truly to continue to be around. Thank you.
Madam President, trustees, chancellor, my name is Roy Wilson. I'm the director of the Martin Luther King Junior Freedom Center, and the executive producer of the Barbara Lee and Eliu Harris Lecture Series. It's been a joy and a honor to relate to and be part of the Peralta Community College District for over ten years. We have an official relationship at the Freedom Center and at the district. We have brought over three hundred students in the last three years to one or more of our college campuses, from high schools and middle schools here in the catchment basin of the Peralta District. We co-produced the Peralta Community College District and the Martin Luther King Freedom Center, the Barbara Lee and Eliu Harris Lecture Series. And I'm sure a lot of us know about that. In doing that, something that isn't known so much is all twenty of our lectures so far have been produced by us, by the Freedom Center, and turned over to the Peralta television station. And thank you for that, brother Jeff. And we're just in the process of starting up a relationship like that with the radio. Last summer, we were six weeks in the Central Valley with Dolores Huerta, in the Dolores Huerta Foundation, doing civic engagement work, voter education and registration. And we had a Peralta tape recorder with us, and we're doing podcasts from, from the valley. We're going to do that, as far as I know, this summer. We're going to start at Stanford University in just about two weeks on another tour for civic engagement. So it's great news, hallelujah, and let's keep the radio station being progressive, community-based, and in the interest of the people. Thank you.
Catherine? Are you Catherine? Excuse me, are you Catherine?
My name is Catherine Steyer.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and Chancellor Legere. My name is Catherine Steyer. My contract was approved on April twenty-fourth. I am the co-director of Peralta Community Radio, KGPC LP ninety-six point nine FM. We are a low-power FM FCC-licensed educational station, and we broadcast at a hundred watts from just right outside this door. We are licensed to the Peralta Community College District. The Peralta Board of Trustees are also our FCC-registered board members. On behalf of KGPC LP, I ask that you please restore funding and commit to your restoration for contract labor to the Department of Public Information, Media and Communications. If you choose not to restore funding, our station will go dark on July first. We ask for eighty hours per week to be able to meet with and help students during the day, and engineer evening shows, including public Board of Trustees meeting, which we are currently airing live right now. KGPC LP is an incredible community and student resource. We partnered with the San Francisco Chronicle to create a feature for the East Bay Opinion Column. We recently connected with stations WNYC in New York City and WBEZ in Chicago. And if we are able to come to work on July first, we will begin working with other University of California radio stations on the California College and University News Wire. I get it, budgets are hard. The bigger you get, the harder they become. As a wise man once said, mo' money, mo' problems. But please, I implore you, do not cut a direct student service that provides learning opportunities and wildly creative programming for Peralta and the East Bay. We are an educational and media resource to the four colleges in Alameda County. In our three years as an FM station, we have been wildly successful and are heard in a hundred and thirty-two countries, from Afghanistan to Zimbabwe. But here at home, we provide an essential and necessary service to students, faculty, and residents. Please restore and commit to restoring the contract or funding to our department. If you do not, we will most likely lose our license, which took ten years to secure. If lost, it is almost certain that it can never be acquired again, ever. This station is a special asset.
You're out of time.
May I, may I? This station is a special asset that attracts students and serves the surrounding community. We are aware that Siri Brown, Vice Chancellor of Academic Affairs, has said that all contracts will be approved and renewed for myself, Catherine Raymondo, Aaron Harbor, and Joe Sullivan. Radio will continue uninterrupted, and we look forward to a meeting to be held in the next few days with Chancellor Legere. Thank you, everyone.
Richard, can you pronounce your last name for me?
It's Schlossman. My first name is Isaac.
No, that's not you. Hold on.
Oh, we're out of order. You want to go?
Oh, you're Isaac?
Yeah, I'm Isaac.
Okay, Isaac, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Isaac Schlossman. I'm a DJ at KGPC. I have a monthly show. And I'm glad to hear that you're considering to continue to fund the station, and the contract workers for it, who are nothing short of incredible, and do a great job reaching out to the community and providing a really amazing service. Thank you so much.
Claire Porter?
Which mic is it? This one? Okay. Hi, I'm Claire Porter. I'm a former Laney College student, and I'm relieved to hear that the station will not be cut, but not nearly as relieved as Katie and Aaron and everyone who is a contractor and is paid as such to run the station. They do a great job. And I'm going to read just a couple of comments that we've received at KGPC from some listeners and supporters. "Great station. Community radio has played a very important part in expanding my horizons over the last fifty years. In an age of consolidating media outlets and local editorial opinions scripted from afar, the voices of our local communities need support and information. Keep KGPC." "Interesting convo about vinyl." "Hi, Torita. Nice to hear your voice, even if through the airwaves only. Thank you, Flo, for interviewing her." "Fantastic show. Please tell us, how can we support?" "Tony Mont and Isaac Sherman, listening from Palm Springs, Cali. Baby." "Love your show, Bob White." "I love Lady G's show." "Hi, I love the station. We listen almost every night. Are you going to make shirts or stickers with the Monterey logo? Because I would definitely buy some. Keep college radio alive." "Thanks for this station. I'm currently a student at Laney College with the Music Department and Japanese Department. If I provided you with a letter of recommendation from these departments, would you consider me for some sort of internship? I live in Alameda. I'm also finishing a grad program in Hayward, and I'll be here for a while. Thank you in advance, KGPC." I'll read a couple more. "Chess fan is so good, really, really good. I love him. Genuine music and feeling." "Protect the students. Show them education is the way, by providing them with access to education, be it career, technical training, or transfer to a four-year college. These are services that a community colleges, college addresses." And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have Sean McDougall, Jeff Hayman, Jeff Sensory, Mary Shaughnessy, and Vina Sarah in the lineup? Jennifer, you're on.
Hi, good evening. So I'm not going to talk about the radio station, but I am happy that the funding to the radio station has been restored. So thank you all for, for making that decision. I'm going to talk about the budget process, as I tend to discuss when I'm standing here. A year ago, we were given a budget, when I first started as the PFT president, we were given a budget, and sort of, when questions were raised about the actuals versus the budget lines, and concerns about how things sort of weren't aligned well, we were told that over the coming year, that was last year, we would do a better job of adhering to the processes that we already had in place, and using our shared governance structure to really dig deep into the budget, to use actuals, to do trend analysis, and to really have a thorough understanding of what the budget was, where it was coming from, and collaboratively build it. The PBC, which is the shared governance body that does planning and budgeting, right, P and B, that body never received a tentative budget this year. We didn't receive the data on actuals, we didn't receive trend analyses, and we did not receive a tentative budget. Tonight, you all are supposed to be adopting a tentative budget, which we don't have, and will be adopted presumably in two weeks, at which time, again, we will not have spent the time and energy to really dive into, to understand, and to collaborate on. Instead of the PBC getting a budget to review, five days after classes were over, after final exams were over, the college presidents received notification that they were to cut their discretionary budgets for next year by ten percent, and to freeze fifty percent of vacancies for all faculty, staff, and administrators. That decision was made without any shared governance input, and without any collaboration between any of the stakeholders at the colleges. These cuts are not fair. They're not fair when you consider that fifty-five percent of the College of Alameda discretionary budget is actually spent on utilities, right? They're not fair when we're talking about freezing counselors who see students every single day, and full-time faculty who help run the colleges, and have the staying power to be here year after year to invest in those students and the colleges.
Is someone giving their cards to you? I'm sorry, may I have the name, please?
Jeff.
Thank you.
Okay, but fairness can wait for another day, because I don't want this to necessarily be focused just on fairness. The point that I'd like to make tonight is that the process was not transparent. It wasn't collegial, and it was not collaborative. It's an unacceptable process that's occurred this year in a timeline, in a time that coming together is really imperative. We understand the budget crisis. We understand the, the students, you know, the enrollment is down, and that that impacts our budget. But we are a relies primarily district that should be looking to the faculty leaders in this district to help develop the processes to make it viable. The cuts that are occurring are going to be felt by our students, and we must have the faculty and staff that are serving those students directly every single day weighing in on how and where they happen. Thank you.
Richard? Hey, Richard?
Hi, my name is Richard. Last name is pronounced Tholee. Tholee. I'm a classified staff, and I do want to touch base on the radio station real quick. I just want to say, I'd like to propose that, you know, since the radio station is so important, that maybe Peralta consider converting those contracted positions to maybe hourly or permanent positions. Another question I have, well, one question I have is, I found it interesting, too, that the item six point one was pulled regarding the contract and the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars for Joseph. I met him a couple weeks ago, or a week or two, going through the Peralta offices, meeting with staff, having a sit-down with our associate vice chancellor, sitting down with another contracted staff at the television station. So I'm just wondering why he was introduced as a, as a PR consultant when he hasn't even been brought, been brought for approval before this board. So that's one question that I have. Are the procedures and processes being followed? So going off on something else, I understand that there are many reasons for the, you know, the call to enact budget cuts and a hiring freeze. I want to thank trustee Gonzalez-Win for pointing out in the last meeting that the three new administrative positions from the presentation with the BRJ could roughly cost at a, at a cheap five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for three positions. I see one of the issues, as has been brought up before, is district administrative blow. Administrators are hired en masse, oftentimes as interim, which I'll speak on, in future times, but these individuals often leave before learning and improving the functions at the district, which is a boast of positively impacting students. The current fiscal impact has, has been expressed by the VC, the Vice Chancellor of Finance, in the PBC meeting as overspending, living out of means, mismanagement of funds. Everything looked fine for the last few years. It is structurally, structurally inadequate. And trustee Winston was there for that meeting, and so she could speak on that. But that's how it was expressed. And so my question is, why would classified faculty and students be affected when it's, I see it as a mismanagement of administrative, administrative appointees and, and the shared governance process not being followed? And so I just want to pose another question is, where's the accountability? Where's the accountability? Where is the, how I want to call it?
You're out of time. Did someone else see their time, too?
No, but I got five seconds. Pre-decisional oversight, as, as stated through the shared governance. But there is, there is no pre-decisional oversight. So my question to you is, where is the oversight? So my question to you is, where is the oversight? You know, who is to be held accountable for this? Thank you.
Sean McDougall?
Hi, thank you. So I want to open up with a, I want to open up with a question. What is community? What builds community? What corrodes community? How do we, as Peralta Community College District, grapple with these issues? What experiences and examples do we provide for each other and for the students that we work with? Our answer to these questions is critical, not only for us as a district, as a community college district, but for us regionally, nationally, and globally. How we challenge ourselves to answer these questions will shape what kind of world we're building for ourselves and for future generations. One answer to these questions is provided by the forces that currently inhabit the White House and the forces that are currently in control of our government at the federal level. And those forces feed off of the fear, the isolation, the mistrust that grows when there is no community, when people don't feel trust, when they don't feel there's a culture of collaboration, when they don't feel transparency, when they don't feel they can work together. And so I'm here to speak about the budget in particular, not about any particular budget item, but about the process itself. The fact that decisions are made in a way that doesn't respect the shared governance processes that we say we are committed to, that feeds a culture of isolation and mistrust and doesn't build the kind of community we need if we're going to be the leaders that we need to be to save ourselves and save future generations. And so I want to, I'm here to advocate on the petition that was put together by United Peralta that shared governance processes be respected and that emphasis, to the extent the cuts are needed, that the emphasis be on things that don't directly impact students, emphasis on district cuts versus college cuts. That's one small part, but in the long term, we need to build a different kind of culture. And so I hope this moment of reflection will lead to a different kind of conversation in the future. I don't want to be back here next year. Thank you.
Jeff Hayman? I'm sorry? You're on the top of my stack. You can ladies first? Go right ahead. Just someone come up.
Hey, everybody. Good to see you guys again. I told you I'd be back. I didn't think it was going to be under these circumstances, but here we are. And thank you guys for turning out. And that's how important the radio station is to all of us, okay? I mean, I could more or less throw away this 15-page speech I wrote and the 10 people that ceded their time to me. But let me say a couple of things. This is a good, I think, teachable moment. I also want to thank the chancellor for assuring us publicly that no contractors will be cut at the radio or TV station and that the station will not be shut down. Thank you, chancellor. We appreciate it. And board members, I expect that you will hold the chancellor to his word and that those contracts, those that haven't been approved, will be on the next board agenda in two weeks' time, because the fiscal year is running out. And if these things aren't approved, as you well know, by June 30th, that station goes dark. And you already heard what would happen if that happens. Siri, I want to thank you, Siri Brown, vice chancellor, for meeting with us before this session. We met with Siri, and she assured us that it was all a mistake, that the contracts would indeed be renewed. That's exactly what you said. We have witnesses, but thank you very much. And the chancellor said more or less the same thing right here. So we thank everybody for that. Let me tell you one other thing, since I have 42 seconds. There's $11 million that can be used to fund this station. That is the spring contract that I negotiated that you recognized me for in a beautiful proclamation I'm hanging on my wall just two months ago. That money can be used to fund the station. That's what it was designed to do. And in fact, there is a full-time, a funded, full-time position that has not been filled for the last three years, ever since chancellor Yar took office. For some reason, it makes no sense. There's funding. It's obviously a great community thing for our students and for us. Keep it alive, please. So thank you very much. By the way, I also do a show. First Saturdays, OutKast Revisited. From a garage somewhere in Alameda. It comes out over KGPC 96.9, and it's OutKast Revisited Punk Rock. Tune in. Thanks, everybody.
Mary?
Hi, my name is Mary Shaughnessy. I don't do a radio show. I'm a counselor. I'm a counselor at College of Alameda. And I will confess to you right now that I spend a lot of time looking at transcripts and encouraging students. And there's a lot of things I'm really, really good at. Budgets are not one of them. I don't live my life in budgets. But I do live my life encouraging students, helping them to see the hope that they forgot. And I'm also exceptionally good at hugs and love, loving my students. I'm really good at UC transfer. And I'm really good at building community. And I'm really good at building community on our campus. Which is, I wanted to talk about the effect that the email that we received from our president that talked about the cuts that we were all to expect. That, I got that email when I was at a institute that we put together, a summer institute, where we assembled 100 members of our community, faculty, classified staff, students, administrators, to talk about the new world of guided pathways and to really generate a lot of energy. That email had a very chilling effect on our ability to build our community and to think innovatively and to gather the support that we're going to need on our campus to really transform our institution when it was, when we were, there was a lot of cynicism in the room that we were powerless and that we were getting information that was the first time that we were hearing this information that, as our PFT president talked about, that shared governance process hadn't been followed. And there was an incredible sense of cynicism in the room. My understanding is that everyone across the campuses received that same email of cuts and that the district will see those same cuts as well. But I want to share with you that not all budgets are equal and that I implore you very respectfully, I ask that the district take a larger share of the cuts than the campuses are being asked to take. Our discretionary budgets keep our lights on. 56% of our budget is for utilities. One of the ways we're going to cut, make a 10% cut, is to turn our lights off. While we're looking at a budget on the district that is two times more than the total of all the campuses. So I ask you very respectfully, allow us to build the community on our campus by giving us that positive sense that the district is going to take a larger share. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Vena Serra, then Arturo Davila, Davila, Fred Burgoyne, Mario Rivas. Are these people here? Can you please come forward? Louis Quinlan and Tom Renbarger. So will you all please be aware of the timeframe that you have so that everyone will have an opportunity to speak? Thank you. Vena? Yeah, just come up. Okay, Vena Serra. Is, Vena's not here. Okay, that's gone. Okay, Mario, go ahead.
When I started this, Dr. Mario Rivas, I started my education at Laney College, quick background. And after being raised in Oakland, California, by a mother, a single Spanish-speaking mother on welfare. And I did my PhD at Minnesota. Since then, I've worked here for 17 years. I'm now teaching psychology at Merit, and I'm the academic senate president for the last three years. I want to talk about board attention to ensuring thoroughness and success of processes and procedures at the district. I recently had a conversation with vice chancellor Cole where he shared that there are three factors related to organizational effectiveness: operational efficiency, strategic innovation, and intimacy, connectedness with each other and with our students. One, too often I have seen, and I want to say this with strength, too often I've seen people, persons hired here and working here who don't affect competency to support the effectiveness of this district. We have to change that. We need to do better strategic planning at this district. For example, early alert. We've been working on it probably for about 40 years. It's kind of late alert right now. But the board needs to sort of oversee that we're really doing strategic planning. Lastly, develop faculty competence. I've really seen, as a senate president, that administrators come and go. We've heard that. The faculty need to support it to become competent leaders to affect positive change in this district. That's the participatory governance process. I want to thank Marie Burns, who's not here, I think, for an emergency. I meet with her every week. I meet with the vice president every week of instruction. And I talk about, as senate president, what the faculty is seeing needs to be done on campus, and it works. We need to do a better job having participatory governance on campus. As we've heard, we need to listen to faculty because 17 years I've been here.
Okay, someone's going to have to see their time to you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Arturo? Thank you for your comments.
Hello.
Please watch the clock.
My name is Arturo Davila. I'm the chair of the Department of Modern Languages at Laney at the Latinx Cultural Center, the coordinator, and one of the members of PACLA. I just want to say that we have a radio station. I'm a faculty, and we have a radio station in Spanish and indigenous languages. We also use Nahuatl, something that we're defending. So I thank you because you're going to defend the radio station and keep it. But I also want to say that we want to, in the radio station, we also use, we bring people from DACA. We bring people from the community, successful and not successful, people with papers and without documents and without documents. So we're really giving a service on radio. So we hope to grow with you. But also about the cuts, I think many years ago, we did a strong effort to pass Prop 30 so that the, to tax the rich. And we received a lot of money, and that supposedly helped us to change the faculty, the hiring of faculty, hiring of part-timers, hiring of counselors, etc. But all, what I want to tell you is that every time that you hire a person that is over $1,000, you're getting rid of 20 part-time faculty and probably 100 or 200 working students, work students, because their salaries, their salaries is like $3,000 to $5,000 per class, and the students get $13,65 per hour. So just consider that. Every time you're hiring a person at the district, you're depriving at least 20 part-timers from a class and maybe 100 students from a job. Thank you very much.
Fred?
Evening, everyone. My name is Louis Quinlan. I'm department chair of machine technology at Laney College. I'm here for three reasons. Number one, to back the Peralta-United petition. Two years ago and last year, this district had more money than it has ever had in its history. And yet, we're talking about budget deficits this year. And I think the main reason for that has been the tremendous growth of the budget in this building and the administrative positions, the number of administrative positions. I don't know how we can appoint intern people for a year and a half and two years to decide, we really don't need that position. Where is the planning? Where is the execution when we do things like that? The second thing I would like to address is the bond issue and the parcel tax issue. Our president wrote an email questioning whether faculty would support it. Now, there's not, a person here believes we don't need it. The question is, are they going to be effective? If we do a new bond measure, the same way we did Measure A, it is not going to be effective. If we do the parcel tax extension, like we've done this parcel tax, it is not going to be effective. And that's what we're really questioning, is effectiveness and execution of these efforts. That's what we need to work on. We back all these measures. We want more money for the students. We want better buildings to teach in. But we do not want to stand by and see hundreds and thousands and millions of dollars wasted. We had $390 million in Measure A, and we had very little to show for it if you look around this district in terms of buildings. We have buildings that haven't been completed. They aren't finished. They're basically, they're shells. Things like the Best Center, who was supposed to be part of the National Science Foundation grant, is a shell of what it was supposed to be. Even the landmark building up at Merit is not completed. We cannot do this anymore. We have to be wise in what we're doing. And that's what we're asking for, is that we do these things with some cooperation. We do them with some planning, and we execute what we're trying to do as opposed to spending a lot of money on huge salaries. Thank you.
It's Fred. You're cute. You're Fred. Can you pronounce your last name for me?
My name is Fred Burgoyne.
Thank you.
Unless you want to ask the chancellor how to pronounce it correctly.
I'm going to take your word for it.
That's okay. Good evening, trustees, especially new trustees. Asia, sorry, good evening, trustees, new trustees. Asia, Nick, welcome. Chancellors, vice chancellors, presidents. I'm sorry, but I'm here to talk about budgets. I know, unless your name is Blake Johnson, that's not fun. I understand that. Just to remind you of what Jennifer said earlier, the budget cuts were announced the week after finals, which means that faculty are gone, which means that shared governance is down to zero. That the colleges were given three days initially to turn around and give something to the office of finance to come up with a plan. That was extended, but still, the point is, shared governance did not occur. Now, I raised this at a meeting of the PBC yesterday. It's the Planning and Budgeting Council, Planning and Budgeting Council, whose job is to inform the development of the budget, not to be informed of what the budget will be. And this is what happened yesterday at a special meeting. So, again, the fact that we're in the summer now means that there is no shared governance here. Now, we're going to come back. There's going to be a PBIM summit on August 24th. That's when shared governance starts again in the fall. You are going to vote on the final budget 18 days later. 18 days. Take away two weeks, because that's how long you need to see the budget in advance. That leaves four days for shared governance to review the budget cuts, including a weekend. This means one meeting. One meeting. One meeting at the PBIM summit on Friday, August 24th, sorry. That is our only chance. That is not enough. Now, if we want to call this shared governance, I don't think that's exactly what it says in Title V. That was definitely not the intention of Title V.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Tom? And can we have Wendy Beldon, Christine Olson, Erin Denny, Rodrigo Torres, Todd Stratman, and, it looks, I can barely see it. It's Kai something Wilson. That's the last of our speakers. Please come forward. Your time is starting.
Yep, my name is Tom Renbarger. I am the co-chair of the Math and Physical Sciences Department at Merit College, and I'm a physics and astronomy instructor. I'm going to speak sort of more at the ground level, sort of my experience with what's happening with the budget here. So there is a part-time technician who helps me with setup labs. So there is a part-time technician who helps me with set up labs, and there's some uncertainty as to whether he will actually be hired in time or hired at all. And then, if he's not hired, then that will fall to me to prepare. And I already teach full-time. I teach a 1.06 load. I'm the Chair of the Professional Development Committee, and I've just volunteered to be the Chair of the Student, of the Strategic Enrollment Management Committee at Merritt College, which is very important, given the state of our budget and the fact that the enrollment shortfall is one of the main reasons why we're in this budget crunch. If this technician is not hired, his name is Michaeli Bruni, then I cannot be the Chair of the Strategic Enrollment Management Committee, and this is a position that's gone unstaffed for an entire year. The other thing I want to say is that one of the committees that does meet over the summer is the Professional Development Committee, is they prepare the flex days, both for the district and for the colleges. And so after this email is received, there are three full-time faculty on the Professional Development Committee, two of them are tenure-track faculty, and given sort of the administrative fiat nature of the announcement, they were questioning, well, what's going to happen when we run out of money next year? Are we going to lay off recently hired tenure-track faculty? This is the conversation that's going on at Merritt College, at least with the committee that I'm working on. And it's really, it's really bad for morale when the shared governance procedure gets circumvented in this manner. And I understand that the timing, you know, the timing is the timing, but it has ripple effects that are quite unfortunate. Thank you.
Wendy Beldon? Wendy Beldon, not here. Christine Olson? And then are you Erin?
I'm Christine Olson.
Okay, great, thank you.
Christine Olson, Human Development Chair, Merritt College. So about in the past five years, the goal of the district has been to grow enrollment and to build programs. So from 1314 to 1516, one of the strategies by the Chancellor to grow enrollment was to hire more consultants and raise administrative salaries. In that year, this district office grew by $12 million. Clearly, that strategy of more administrative salaries and more consultants has not worked. Here we are today with this budget mess. You build enrollment, you build programs by hiring full-time faculty who write the curriculum, who develop the programs, and invest in the colleges. The Board says, we serve the students. We understand that, we on the front lines, whether it's classified or whether it's faculty or counselors. We know what it means to serve students. Now, about three weeks ago, I sat on the Paramount stage with about half of the Board. As Director and Chair of the Child Development Program, you saw that we had over 390 students who walked that, who got certificates and degrees. The reason that we're so successful was because we have full-time contract people, like myself, who have spent a lot of time working on grants to get those programs going. That's how we build enrollment. Another example from our program is Jennifer Briffa, who headed up the pilot program at the Fruitvale Center for bilingual classes and for the no-credit classes. That program is booming. There's a whole new demographic that's coming in. And when those students walked across that stage with those nine-unit certificates, which count for completion, they were proud, those families were proud. That's what builds programs, full-time faculty who know what they're doing and can build this up. So please, keep the cuts away from the colleges. You've tried it by loading up the district office. Here we are today.
Your time is up, so you want to summarize?
No, that's it. I think you know my point.
Okay, Erin?
Hi, good evening. My name is Erin Denny. I just completed my first semester at Laney and Merritt campuses at 41, actually, today's my birthday, I'm 42. I'm a first-time, I'm a first-time student. I've also been disabled for the last 10 years, and my education at Peralta is my pathway out of disability and back into the workforce. Merritt offers histotech and microscopy classes that no other campus, certainly at a community college level, is anywhere in the area, maybe even in the state. When I discovered I could go to school, get financial aid, and get back to the workforce, I can't tell you how much my life changed. For the first time in years, my life has had purpose. When you're disabled for a decade, I can't tell you what a rare occurrence that is, and I'm ferociously holding on to it. So I did everything I was supposed to do. I listened to the teachers, I did the work, I met with counselors, I made an educational plan. I ended up getting a 4.0 this first semester. Now, I'm coming to you because two of the three units, my colleague spoke to you about this earlier, we were supposed to have three units offered this summer, and two of the three-unit classes are being canceled, specifically Bioscience 14 and Bioscience 15. I can't tell you the troubles that we've had signing up for these classes in the first place. I know many people who just gave up because it was so difficult to register due to technical issues with the system. For example, lecture and lab times were overlapping, so you couldn't even register for the classes, okay? It might seem like not a big deal to cancel just two units, but it has repercussions that affect real people in the real world. Without these classes, many of us will be scrambling to figure out how we're going to get enough units for financial aid, and many of the other classes are now full. First, financial aid dispersants happen on Friday. Now, I'm considered only partial, not full-time, without these just two credits. That's money out of my pocket that I was counting on. Now, at least, at minimum, yeah, maybe I can get into some other classes, but it will be at least delayed, because I'm on the waiting list in some other classes that I need. That's a hardship for me, since I'm already limited in my income due to being disabled. Other people arrange their entire work and childcare schedules around these classes because they're literally the only time that these classes were offered to finish up their certification. Now, they're being told that it might happen in the next semester, but then those classes are going to be pushed back. So some people are going to have to wait potentially a whole other year to start their new careers, because two credits are being canceled out of the three that were being offered this summer.
Erin, I'm going to need you to wrap it up.
Oh, sorry. At our meeting last night, many people were in tears, you know. I think you understand what I'm trying to ask for. Basically, we just want those two credit classes restored, Bioscience 14 and Bioscience 15. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Rodrigo?
Hi, I'm Rodrigo Torres. I am reading this on behalf of Catherine Raymondo, who is not able to attend this meeting. Hello, I am currently a co-director of KGPC. I also regularly work with multiple nationally broadcast radio programs on NPR, so feel that I can speak with experience regarding the importance of college and community radio, as stations similar to KGPC are where I got my start. KGPC provides a foundation for Peralta students to build technical and creative skills that can launch them into a career in radio, as well as a thriving and rapidly expanding podcast market. These skills are not cheap to acquire. Studio time, access to industry-standard audio editing programs, recording equipment, and mentorship are extremely valuable and can be difficult to come by. KGPC provides all of these things for free to essentially any Peralta student or teacher that knocks on our door. We help them build a quality portfolio of work and train them in anything they wish, Pro Tools mixing, live radio production, podcast creation, editing, and sometimes even music recording. We're enthusiastic to help them in anything they bring to us. The above work is what I'm most proud of, but that's just the tip of it. To have a low-power FM license is an extremely special privilege, one that KGPC worked for 10 years to secure. The East Bay community at large benefits from it. KGPC ideally needs 80 hours of contract labor per week in order for the station to fully support the Peralta community. Best, Catherine Raymondo. Thank you.
And Mr. Wilson? Are you Mr. Wilson?
No, I'm not.
What is your name?
Huh?
What is your name?
Todd Statman.
Todd? Did I call it?
It's pronounced as "stratman."
I have it here.
Stratman, okay.
Thank you.
That's how my old gym teacher used to pronounce it. Thanks very much for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Todd Statman. For the last four years, I've been the host of a show called Pop Offensive on KGPC. I'll describe Pop Offensive as follows. KGPC has a lot of progressive and challenging musical programming. You can turn it on pretty much any time of the day and hear some very challenging music, you know, experimental, industrial, indigenous, electronic, what have you. And then I come on and I play ABBA and ruin everything. It's my job. Anyway, we have the Chancellor's reassurance that KGPC is not going to go dark, and I'm very happy to hear that. But we've been, we've been given this opportunity to talk about the importance of the station, so I want to take this opportunity to do that. I'm glad that KGPC is not going dark, and I hope that it will be allowed to thrive and grow as the years go on, because I think if it had shut down, Peralta would risk forfeiting an opportunity to be at the cultural center of what is rapidly becoming the most artistically vibrant city in the Bay Area. And this is why. I have a dear friend who is an artist, and he lives in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. Back in the 90s, as part of an effort to raise Pittsburgh's profile on the national stage, the city began pouring money into the local arts community in the form of new loft gallery and performance spaces, street fairs, et cetera. Why the city's leaders did this is because they knew that what gives a city its unique character, what makes it a destination spot and an exciting place to live is its artists. Take San Francisco. What gives San Francisco its character? What is its soul? It's not Google, it's not Twitter, it's not Salesforce, it's the creative types, the artists, bohemians, and weirdos, who have traditionally made their homes in neighborhoods like North Beach, The Mission, and The Hate, and eventually Oakland, of course. I think Oakland, with its burgeoning arts, theater, and literary communities, is the same. And one component that I think is crucial to a thriving local art scene is an independent
I'm going to need you to wrap it up, sir. Your time is long past, I'm going to need you to wrap it up.
Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Finish. I mean, just give us your, your.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, okay. I didn't say stop.
Oh, okay. So I'm saying that I think that a progressive station like KGPC is crucial to a thriving local art scene. And I think that's especially true in the case of KGPC, because it so accurately mirrors the diversity of the city. And of course, my interest in KGPC's survival is also personal. Jeff cajoled me into starting the show, and at that time, I was going through some pretty rough stuff. Suffice it to say that I wouldn't have imagined myself four years later doing much of anything, much less hosting a monthly radio program with a small but loyal following. I had never wanted to be a DJ, but I love music. And I found that being given the opportunity to share music in this way is a real gift, because sharing music is like sharing your soul. KGPC has the potential to be at the very soul of this community, this city, if we let it. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the Chancellor's report.
I was already committed to the radio, and now that I know that you play ABBA, I definitely will be listening, a big fan. This is our first board meeting following commencement, and I want to say how impressed we were all with all of the commencement ceremonies, and want to congratulate the Presidents, as well as their faculty, staff, and administrators, and students, for the great experience that we all had. Even though it was, at one point, we had two in a row, it looked like we could have done a third one, because it was so exciting. So want to, and it really shows what, why we do what we do and the results of what we do. So I want to, again, congratulate the colleges for the great work that they did. At the commencement at Merritt College, a student came to me who had graduated, and she said that I came to her church, and I told them that going to college doesn't mean that you have to go full-time. Even if you take one class every semester, at the end, you're going to be able to do well. So she encouraged, she came and shared that with me. She said she was graduating from Merritt College that night, but she had already been attending UC Berkeley. While before I spoke to the congregation, she had stopped going. And so I've used that as a way, almost every time I run into a group of folks or people who should get their education, I encourage them, even if you do one class a semester, at the end, you're going to be better off than if you don't do at all. So really excited about commencement and wish our students, our faculty, staff, and our Presidents the best for the summer. Concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Chancellor Legere. The next item on our agenda is presentations from the, on the potential bond and parcel tax measures, and the presenter is Vincent McCarley.
Good evening, Madam President, Trustees, Chancellor. My name again is Vincent McCarley, with Baxter McCarley Berry, and we are financial advisor to the district, along with Dave Olson, who is with Public Financial Management. We'll try to be brief and give you maybe back a little bit of your time from your long evening. Is, uh?
Do we have the presentation online? I have a few hard copies.
Okay.
It's in the board packet.
Okay, I'll go ahead and move forward on it in a matter of time. As you know, we've had considerable discussion over time, or you have, in regards to potential bond measure, potential parcel tax measure. And we're moving forward on that, and this is another part in that process, before we actually bring an action item to you. And what you'll be understanding is that there are basically two items that are involved, one being the parcel tax, one being general obligation bond measure. With the parcel tax, it will set a tax rate, which you're very familiar with from your 2012 parcel tax measure, and that will have a specific duration, will spell out any particular exemptions, and will also allow for the tax collection process. The other item, in terms of the general obligation bond, will actually spell out the estimated cost of repayment. We'll talk about the use of the proceeds, including the project lists, and what that will mean relative to the taxpayers. As you're familiar with, from your last parcel tax measure, which was in 2012, that was approved at a 72% voter approval rate, and set a parcel tax for an eight-year duration, basically at $42, and raises about $8 million per year. Your previous bond measures have totaled roughly about a little over $600 million, with the last being in 2006. And of those measures, each of them have received in excess of 68% in terms of voter approval, with a high of 79%. So again, showing very strong voter approval support for the district and its parcel tax measure, as well as its bond measure. For the parcel tax measure, it requires a 2/3 voter approval rating. For the general obligation bond measure, under the proposition that we would be utilizing, it requires a 55% voter approval level. What we're contemplating is putting forward, on the parcel tax side, is an extension or a new parcel tax at the same level that you currently have from the 28, 2012 measure, which again, will be expiring in 2020. And so again, that will continue at same level, it's not asking for an increase, but the same level, and again, would generate roughly about $8 million a year for an additional eight-year period. For the general obligation measure, we're looking at an $800 million bond measure, and looking at an expenditure or an issuance over a full 10-year period that would be used for projects over that time. And so that will keep basically your facilities program going over that period of time, versus having stops and starts over your construction needs. Dave?
Okay, thank you, Vince. So Vince provided a little background on the two measures, the parcel tax and the bond measure, and I'm going to talk a little bit about how we came to the recommendation of an $800 million bond sizing. The, first of all, the district has some history of issuing bonds, holding bond elections, doing bond projects. The district's taxpayers have a history of paying for those bond projects. So since '92, four measures have all been successful, all very strong, support in the country. community. As Vince said, that's been about $600 million worth of authorization, $535 million have been issued. Recently, the district's been spending money at about $30 or $40 million per year, and the local taxpayers have paid, in 2017, '18 are paying $31 per $100,000 of assessed value. So, this bond will represent an increase to that of about $25. So, the tax moving from 31 to 56. Second thing to say is that, not surprisingly, the district continues to have facility needs, and that's gonna go on forever. This bond measure is gonna cover some renovations to existing facilities that are getting older and some construction of new facilities to meet current educational standards. And as you work through this program over the next 10 or 12 years, facilities will continue to wear down, and there'll be new thoughts and new educational standards. So, this is a continuous program. So, what we wanna do with our, this bond measure, is to make sure that it's sustainable over time. And so, these 10 or 12 years, this phase, doesn't crowd out the next phase. So, being a responsible borrower is a part of the job that Vince and I are doing. So, when we recommend this $800 million bond, we think the district's particular situation, the size of your tax base, its prospects for growth, which are good, the $25 tax limit that Prop 39 puts on you, your existing debt structure recommends an $800 million bond authorization. Now, that's relatively large, your needs are relatively large, but this bond measure's relatively large. So, in order to implement it in a way that is prudent, we're gonna be doing that over time. So, we remain flexible to changes in the tax base and changes in interest rates and other factors. That's why we're looking at a program that's likely to be implemented over 10 or 12 years. There's a schedule in your packet that talks about potential issuance dates, that's really a pro forma schedule that we model out for tax rate setting purposes, and the size of those issues will be determined based on construction needs and based on various other factors. So, that's gonna be a work in progress. But it is gonna be implemented over a long period of time. We're talking about a lot of needs in this district, and we're also talking about a physical plant that's gonna need attention on an ongoing and consistent basis. So, kind of our big theme here is that this part of a, one component of a broad and long-term financing strategy, and I said it a lot here tonight, we wanna invest in the facilities on an ongoing and consistent basis, so we wanna pace our program, that we do that in a responsible way. We wanna continue to pursue additional sources of revenues so that it all won't be, all the costs of this program won't be on the taxpayers' back, and we recognize that the program will be implemented over time and things will change over the next five, 10, 15 years. Costs will change on projects, priorities will change on projects. So, the master facilities plan that's been put together reflects current priorities, and that's a solid document that is a basis of our thinking at this point, but things are gonna be implemented over time. So, the program that we're talking about, repay bonds over 30 years, will cost taxpayers an additional $25 on what they're paying now per $100,000, and that will be reflected in the bond documents that come before the board in two weeks. So, with that, I'm open to answering any questions, and Vince, I'm sure, as well.
And I think we've also put in here a timeline of some of the steps that have already have occurred and the steps yet to come, and that we're looking at bringing this back on the 26th for your board meeting for consideration. For the 26th for your consideration, and the deadline for submitting a resolution to the county is August 9th, if we wanna be on the November ballot.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I had a question, and we'll, I'm sure the rest of our trustees will also have questions. I had a question regarding going from the 31 to the 56. What, that amount with regard to the additional tax for our ratepayers, our taxpayers, in terms of the, I guess, the canvassing that's been done to find out where that's, what that type of figure looks like. And then, I also had a question regarding the recent credit upgrade that we got, and if a competitive sale of our bonds with this recent upgrade will make the, will likely lead to a lower interest rate, that the district will have to pay back with regard to those bonds.
Good questions. In regards to the affordability question and the like and the receptiveness of the taxpayers, it was one of the items specifically tested by the polling consultants in their survey, and that's one of the reasons or one of the underlying support features to our recommending the $800 billion. That was an item that was specifically put in there. To an average, say, a home of roughly about $1 million of value, that would mean roughly about $170 per year, roughly, in terms of an increase. Just to put that maybe in perspective, and, again, that's gonna vary, you know, from household to household. So, again, those items have been tested. In regards to the rating upgrade, the rating upgrade was in relation to the OPEB bonds, not the general obligation bonds. And so, these will be general obligation bonds. But one of the items that, you know, Dave and I will be working at is trying to see how we can best position the district from a rating perspective, and one of those is, obviously, to the extent we have success with the extension of the parcel tax, that would be one of the considerations that the rating analysts will take into effect in consideration of their analysis, in that they look at what other sources outside of the governmentally defined revenue base does the district have to work with. And so, that is considered to be a credit strength in addition to the robust economy that we're currently experiencing.
Thank you. Do we have questions from other trustees? Nikki's nodding, that's a yes.
Thank you for the presentation. I'm aware also that we have, at this point, pretty high public approval, our polling was good, and I'm wondering, when are we gonna actually see the language of this thing? I personally don't wanna get it four days before I have to vote on it, in particular because probably, I don't know, you know, notwithstanding whatever good things are happening in this district over the last six months, probably 90% of the people who've come in front of this board have bitterly complained about the functioning in the district. And I was reading the president of the Peralta Federation of Teachers communication today, basically saying, you know, we don't trust the district on parcel, we don't trust the district on bond. If they come this way with no engagement, with no discussion, this thing is dead on arrival, we will oppose it. I've heard the chair of the parcel tax oversight committee say that he personally will write the ballot argument against a renewal. And so, I'm, you know, I think, like everybody in this room, we're very concerned about funding in this district, and so parcel and bond are critical, but I'm quite concerned that, here we are, two weeks before you're asking us to consider this, this board has not seen the language. This board is a political body, this is inherently a political thing. When are we gonna see the language of these very complicated, massive items that have profound implications for the budget of this district and the accountability of our budgets?
Understood. There's some specific language that has to be within the ballot measure. We're actually in the process, or I shouldn't say I, but bond council is in the process of drafting the language that will come before you. And I can't speak to the actual date that you will get the document, but I will defer to the chancellor in terms of, you know, the ability to put that into your hands, you know, at a longer lead time. And I'm quite confident that we can accomplish that.
Through the chair, may I address the chancellor that question?
We, Mr. Palmer, would you share where we are with the draft? There are some developments that we have been expecting in the legislature, that will be more favorable to bond language. I think we're pretty close, so we have some strategies on how to do that, but we're fairly close to getting you something. Mr. Palmer?
A point of clarification before you answer that. Are we talking about the resolution that's supposed to be coming in two weeks, which has specific statutory language that has to do with the rate, whether or not it's compounding interest? Are we talking about the actual bond language, which we have to see, but it's not the resolution that's coming? Those are two. Or could you speak to the difference between those two things, because I think it might add some clarification?
And, Madam President, if I can clarify my question, thank you for that clarification. We're going to put ballot measure in front of the voters. This board will be voting on that language. What I'm asking for is, when will we see the language that is in front of the voters that will be statutorily binding, that will bind the district to do a certain thing for each of these, each of these measures? That's what I'm interested in.
Right, and the resolution, okay, the resolution in two weeks, and Nikki says, when will we see the actual language of the bond, what is gonna be funded? So, those are two separate things.
Both parcel and bond.
Good evening, trustees. My name is John Palmer, I'm with the law firm, Orkarrington and Sutcliffe, and we act as your bond counsel. So, maybe a little bit of background, we started preparing the statutory, or we started preparing the 75-word ballot question and the full text of the measure that will appear in the voter information pamphlet back in December when we were thinking about going forward toward the June ballot. We've circulated a draft of that internally. As the chancellor said, the last piece we're waiting on is to see what happens to AB 195, which was a bill that became effective at the beginning of this year that requires a bunch of additional information to be put into the 75 words. It looks like the legislature is gonna suspend AB 195 for two years because it doesn't really work for bond measures. And if that happens, we'll be able to revert to the type of question that we used before AB 195, which tends to be much more politically palatable. And so, we're hoping that we're gonna get word on that in this budget process, hopefully sooner, rather than the state budget process, hopefully sooner rather than later. The resolution that will come forth on the 26th will contain the 75-word ballot label and will contain the full text of the measure that appears in the voter information pamphlet. There's a lot of paper, but the two elements that are very important for you to focus on are that ballot label, because that's what voters see when they go into the voting booth, and then the full text of the measure, which contains the bond project list, which limits what you can spend money on. And we developed that straight from the facilities master plan that was produced. And so, trying to build in a little bit more flexibility for the district to address unforeseen events as they'll occur over the 10 years that you're implementing the bonds, the projects and the project list are the projects that were identified in the facility master plan. And so, hopefully, that's answered your questions, except exactly when you're gonna see the language that's going on the ballot, and I would defer to the chancellor to tell you when you're gonna see that, but it will be soon in any case.
So, I understand there's some variation in what you're considering, depending on what the legislature does, et cetera, et cetera. But isn't it possible to present us with, all right, here's the vanilla version of this thing, if everything stays the same, this is what we're talking about? And then, present us with an alternative? And I think that the, sort of, the more public and the sooner that that comes, I mean, frankly, two weeks is not a lot of land, a lot of time. Some of this stuff is, I'll just say, I'm concerned. And so, that we're two weeks out of almost billion dollars of expenditure that we're committing ourselves to as a district? That concerns me, that the public, that this board hasn't seen it, and that the shared governance groups have had zero input on that language. I mean, you know, we've had the facilities master planning project, but that, the faculty, that the rest of the administrative staff, the classified staff, and the students have had zero input on that, that concerns me quite a bit as a trustee. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I just wanna make sure I understand what your answer was. What you're telling us is that the facilities master plan is where we derive the project list. And the remainder of the bond language are the statutory requirements that are coming, and it won't be, it won't include the recent legislative proposal.
So, it may or may not include AB 195, depending on what the state legislature does this budget season. The bill to repeal or to suspend AB 195 is a budget trailer bill, so it'll get acted on by the governor as part of the budget package. And, you know, we don't know exactly when that's gonna happen, but it'll be in the next month or so. And, yeah, the resolution that will come before you on the 26th will say, here's the 75 words that people will see in the voting booth, and then, here's the bond project list, which is your covenant with your voters about what you're gonna spend money on. And by approving the resolution on the 26th, you will have approved that language and instructed staff to do, take the necessary steps in order to make sure that that appears on the ballot in November.
And that project list is the thing that specifies how we're gonna spend the money, and the project list is the one that went through the process of all the colleges and the shared governance process. Is that right, chancellor?
That is correct.
Okay.
And my, you know, I wasn't on the facilities master planning committee, but to address trustee Un's statement, typically, the facilities master planning process involves a number of interviews with all of the stakeholders, including students and faculty and others.
That was, that was my understanding. I just wanted to make sure I was not incorrect in what I had understood, the facilities master plan and the project list to be. Karen has a question.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation, appreciate it. I have less concern about the bond than I do about the parcel tax. You can look at the buildings that have been recommended by the colleges or the facilities plan, but where is the information coming for the parcel tax? That's number one. And number two, you're increasing the tax rate, correct? And are we doing that because it's a better economy, or why are we doing that? Because it is a lot.
For the parcel tax, we are not suggesting or recommending to increase the tax rate.
It's the bond?
Okay.
Okay.
It's the bonds that would, that would go up.
Okay.
And we're talking about a maximum of $25 per $100,000 of assessed valuation, and the combination of your four outstanding bond measures that you do have is a total of $31 per 100,000 of assessed valuation.
Okay.
So, that's how you get to an aggregate amount of $56.
I see, okay.
Per 100,000.
Okay. And so, the parcel?
And the parcel, again, we're only recommending that you keep at the same level you are currently, which is $42.
Right.
That is scheduled to expire in year 2020, because when it was approved, it was for an eight-year-
Eight years, yeah.
... duration, and we're recommending an additional eight-year add-on to that-
Right.
-as a part of this new measure.
So, the wording for the parcel tax, is that also coming from interviews, or is that, where is that coming from?
The research behind it was a part of the polling that was also related to the, to the bond measure.
Okay.
So, those were done simultaneously-
Together.
... and was indicating, again, the very strong level of support for both measures.
Okay.
And so, that's the reason why we're wanting to move forward on both of them at this point in time.
Because the polling, the polling was good.
Correct. Correct.
Okay. So I just hope that we will get the wordings for the parcel tax, which I think has had a little bit more difficulty this past year in terms of how it has been operationalized. So how it gets spelled out to the taxpayer is very important.
And we are certainly working on that with the chair of the COC, something that could be really provided, that would provide more assurance to the voters. And in addition to that, we are also proposing an internal, in addition to the external team, we are proposing an internal team that would serve as an advisory for the spending that's going to happen for actually both the bond and the parcel tax. Because we certainly want to improve what we do. And having both an internal and external verification team to work on both, I think will strengthen our implementation of both measures.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Do we have any additional questions from the board? Thank you very much for your presentation and for your work.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the NG presentation on energy conservation and sustainability cost savings for energy-related projects district-wide.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having us come. Excuse me. I'm Kelly Lynch-McMahon, interim director of capital projects and facilities. And so we have NG here this evening to do a presentation for you to summarize the work that they've been doing with the district over the last two years and studying some very effective cost measure, energy efficiency cost measure savings that we are hoping to implement and capture in rebate dollars as well as grant dollars through energy efficiency over the next four to five years. So their program that they are presenting is helping us to self-fund some of our energy measures and cost-saving measures for us to implement in parallel with a lot of the other programs that we're going to be doing under the new bond program as well as under our current scheduled maintenance and infrastructure programs. So we have been working with them for the last two years. They have canvassed all four campuses and the district office. And they have developed clear reports, and we will have that ready for you all by the end of this month to look at all of the different cost measures through light retrofits, HVAC upgrades, and looking at overall behavioral modifications in terms of energy usage within spaces. So we have dimmers and sensors, the lights will go off. So they are going to be presenting to you today their goals and programs that they're going to be implementing with us over the next few years. So, and this is Mr. Greg Cox. He's our regional sales manager for NG. And we started with NG as Optera two years ago. And they will explain who they are and what they do.
Good evening, Madam President, board members, the chancellor, constituents. My name is Greg Coxum, and I am the regional sales director for NG Services. And this evening, we're going to try to give you a brief overview, a very high-level overview of the research and the survey work we've been doing for the last about 16 months. So today's agenda, and as I said, we're going to do this within 10 minutes, hopefully. First, we're going to tell you a little bit about NG. We're going to talk about the program goals, the development approach, the findings, the actual facilities assessment. And then we're going to talk about the proposed measures that we are recommending to be implemented. And then finally, we'll talk about the most important part of how it's going to get paid for. And without going into your general fund. So with that, I'll just tell you that NG, we were originally commissioned about 18 months ago by the board to prepare the first phase of a comprehensive program. And at that point, we were Optera Energy Services. We were actually owned by NG at that time. NG has now changed our name to NG Services, North America. NG is actually a very large, in fact, the largest energy services firm in the world. We are actually operating 70 countries and 120,000 employees. NG's 2017 revenue was in excess of $36 billion. We personally, in California, have worked on 32 community college campuses and well over 100 K through 12 campuses. The, and actually, let me back up for a second. NG North America, national headquarters is actually located here in Oakland. And that's, we're really excited about this opportunity because we're also working with Oakland Unified. And we think there's some real synergies that we can bring to the district by putting both programs together. As I mentioned, we've been here about 14 months. We presented our original findings to all of the stakeholders on the left-hand side. So this has been, we've had a lot of input from a number of stakeholders. Most of the equipment that we looked at, you're going to find that that equipment is well beyond its useful life. And fortunately, you have good staff, and the equipment's actually still running. But for this program, we had three specific goals. One was facility modernization. And when I say modernization, I really mean, how do we take equipment that's old and beyond its useful life and replace that with efficient equipment that's ready for the 21st century classroom? And then the second, the second goal was educational outcomes. A big part of our programs is to bring, to tie the educational program from the things that we do to your classrooms. And so career pathways, we're an engineering company. And so we hire engineers and all the other trades that are associated with construction. And then finally, fiscal stewardship. And that's, we're going to see what we can do to improve the status of your general fund. So nothing we're going to propose today would have any negative impact on your general fund. And what we have done at this point is we've developed a $30 million project that will replace equipment, replace lighting, some solar, some storage. And we'll talk a little bit more about what the technologies are. But this is all paid for, as I said, with no impact on your general fund. It's from energy savings, from incentives, from Prop 39, and from other state and federal grants. So our approach, so NG is actually a design bill engineering firm. We do all of our development and design in-house. We become the general contractor, and we bid out all of the actual individual trades. So what that means to the district is that this project has the potential of being 100% local and small business. And we think that's really important. Now, we've looked at two phases. And this was done in conjunction with your master plan. What we're going to talk about here tonight are the critical elements that we think need to be addressed as soon as possible. And for instance, you have central plants at Laney that is well beyond its useful life. And some of that equipment has actually failed at this point. So everything that we're going to talk about are critical needs. The midterm modernization needs relate to the energy systems that would be addressed under your bond program. Energy-related systems, we provide those, but you're not obligated to have us do that. But we looked at it. And so anything that we're proposing is consistent with your master plan and your sustainability plan. Now, this should come to no surprise to any of you, but this is what we found. And I guess the bottom line is that most of our equipment is somewhere between 30 and 50 years old. The useful life of a HVAC system is somewhere between 15 and 20 years. So as you can tell, everything needs to be replaced. Now, what are the impacts from some of these things? The equipment was antiquated, inefficient, corroded, and just not operating adequately. But the impact to that is lower enrollment, rising operation and maintenance costs, poor indoor air quality, and elevated temperatures in your classroom. So everything that we actually do, and I should have mentioned that we do have some of the colleagues here that actually went into classrooms. We did air measurements, air sampling, and we did water sampling. Now, here are the Phase 1 critical infrastructure needs that we are proposing to address. And you'll see at each campus, we're looking at the four sites. We did not address this facility because at the time, there was some concern about whether this facility should be part of this program or not. But, so we have not addressed this facility. But what we have, the other four sites, is we have LED lighting at all campuses. Berkeley Campus, Berkeley currently has LED lighting. Central, a new central plant for Laney. Our discussions with the master planner, the master planner originally proposed two central plants, two new central plants. We were able to determine that we could serve the campus with one central plant. That $15 to $20 million can go toward some other project. Then there's energy management systems at each campus. There's electric vehicle charging stations at all campuses with the exception of Berkeley. There's energy storage. And you have solar at Laney and at Merritt. And we would now tie in energy storage for both of those systems. The, we have water efficiency transformers, peak shaving, which is directly connected to the energy storage system. And then there's the educational opportunities. And those educational opportunities would be at all sites. Our educational manager is currently working with Dr. Johnson to develop a program that would fit for your campus. Now, the three, the aviation center, the commissioning district-wide, and the theater lighting were projects that we have recently looked at. They were projects that were in the queue, and we've been asked now to include them into our program. So this could be addressed comprehensively. But currently, under that, the costs of those projects are not included in the cost that we're showing you tonight. We are proposing to add some solar PV at Merritt. There was an opportunity to add solar at Laney. At this point, we are not proposing that. So the investment, as you can see, is roughly $28 million. About $3 million that is in grant, would be grants. And then there's additional money from Prop 39. So here's our educational component that would be developed. So we don't have a custom program for each campus. We develop a specific program based on the offerings. And what's unique about your campus is that you actually have some programs that, some classes that are directly tied to our business. You have some controls classes that we frankly don't find at any other community college in the state. Now, how do we pay for this? So we've got a $29 million project. The first year, that project will generate $1.6 million in energy savings. The key is that our organization will guarantee the college, Peralta District, that you will achieve that $1.6 million. And if there is a shortfall, then we write a check for the difference. And so that is your contractual obligation. That's, that is very important to how we protect the general fund. So there is no exposure to your general fund. Now, this is generally financed by a third party. We provide financing, but the way we normally do this is we would go to the market, we'll bid out the financing, and the financing will then come back to the district. But as I said, we, in this case, the projection is that you're, all of your costs, this includes costs for maintaining the systems with regard to the solar. But all of your costs are in that $1.3 million. At the end of the day, what we're projecting is that you will have roughly $300,000 of, that will go back into your general fund, or it's discretionary. It can be used, it can be used for maintenance. Because one of the things that happens with all bond programs is that we put in a lot of new equipment, but we have no funding to take care of it. So one of the things that we might be able to do through this program, to some extent, is to provide these savings, excess savings, to help maintain your new systems that you put in. The other part of this is that we are, through working with your staff, we have projected to include $5 million from previous, from previous bond measures to buy down some of the mechanical systems. So just to break this down, lighting, controls save a lot of energy. Solar, they save a lot of energy. HVAC systems, the mechanical systems that are really critical to your classrooms, save very little energy. And what we do is we bundle these systems to try to help pay for everything out of energy savings. So the financing, as we're proposing it, would be 18 years of financing. That financing period could change. And there are a number of ways that the financing can be structured. But the point is that we will have energy savings to pay for your program. So what are our next steps? So we have, at this point, we have completed our study. And the study's been reviewed by your staff. We have met with each campus and the facilities team on each campus, as well as the executive staffs for each campus. So at this point, our next step is to look, go out to the market, determine what would be potential financing options, and bring that back to the staff. At some point, we'll come back to the board and ask for approval for an implementation contract. And once, if we are successful with that, then we would actually start work this summer. Your Prop 39, and the reason that this is important is because we have about, close to $4 million that's at risk. And that work, for that money, has to be implemented by March of 2019. And that money actually came from Prop 39 through the chancellor's office. So as I said, we're going to come, we would come back and ask for approval for an implementation contract. I know that, personally, I know that this is a complicated financial arrangement. So we've spent a lot of time with the district, but we certainly would be available to answer any questions that you may have. So at this point, I think I did it in 10 minutes. And if I can answer any questions, certainly I will, I'm available.
It looks like what the financing is structured is sort of like the certificates of participation, where you sell the interest in the payments to different investors.
You do.
And our savings is the reduction in the amount that we generally pay for energy.
Precisely. This is money that you're paying to PG&E or to Alameda.
So my question is, at the end of the 25 years, our baseline then becomes the energy, whatever the, whatever the technology was that brought us to that energy savings, is that the baseline? It's not, it's not, the needle moves then. It moves towards sustainability because you're not.
Yeah, the needle, excuse me, but the needle moves in a couple of ways. The first is your baseline is, from our perspective, is what you used in the last three years. So this is what you used, okay? Now, we're going to show you where we're going to get you if you save. So that baseline stays the same, okay? Now, at the end of 25 years, then all the savings belong to you. I say 25 years, at the end of 18 years, whatever the finance period.
What I was looking for was the sustainability progress, right? So I know that right now, we have antiquated equipment. The HVAC is all the, you know, we have this, this two central plants. The technology is such that we can go to one. But the needle has to move in order for us to be moving towards sustainability. We get the new equipment, then the amount that we pay in energy has to drop at the end of the 25 years so that the baseline then becomes the baseline set by the new technology and the lower energy use, right?
Right. So if I can, if I can go back, then, just to simplify, at the So, if I can, if I can go back, then, just to simplify, at the end of the eighteen years, your baseline then becomes two point seven million dollars lower than where you were. Okay? That's your baseline. So, we're just using that two point seven to pay for it. So, if you had money to pay for it right now, then that money would go into your general fund, okay?
Some of the, and so we're, the next question is, do we get any windfalls or possibly benefit from improved technology as we go? Say, for instance, there's a better light than the LED light. Or say, for instance, there's better technology than the HVAC systems that we're putting in now.
Right.
Is it, is, would we be able to integrate that into the system that we are installing with these, with the scheduled construction?
So, yes and no. I say that because once you put in new equipment, then you're not going to want to take that out before you pay for it.
Not replace it, though, but if you, you had a slide here that had construction that, all the projects don't happen at once.
No. But, but they all happen over eighteen months. Yeah. And so, just to give, to address your issue about the LED lighting, LED lighting came after fifty years of no progress, right? So, LED lighting is totally different than everything we've used up to this point. So, we're, I don't think we're going to see the kind of technology changes that, because it's a good question, but we really don't project that we're going to see that kind of technology change in the next ten, fifteen years. Now, solar may change with regard to how efficient it is, and the panels may get more efficient. But the savings and the costs that we project are based on keeping that equipment regardless of the technology change, okay? And then the other reason that the needle moves is utility rates go up every year, okay? So, we've projected three percent, but the reality is, over the last twenty years, utilities have gone up well over five percent. But, you know, we took a fairly conservative approach, okay?
Thank you. Do we have any addition, any other questions? Everybody's looking, we have two questions.
I wanted to ask a question. Oh. Hi, I wanted to ask a question. On the slideshow, it showed that there would be services provided for students to work with a curriculum for each campus. And so, and you're saying that it would take eighteen months? They would receive a certificate within that eighteen months, or some type of a paid stipend from your company?
Yes, two questions, two answers to your question. One is, we don't create curriculum, and I probably should, I probably need to be clear on that. What we do is we, we augment curriculum. So, we support you, we provide our information so that, so that your faculty can use that information in their, with real world data. So, so we don't create new curriculum. I mean, that's, need to be clear on that, because it's, you can only do that through the chancellor's office.
I think the chancellor, where's the, the chancellor could speak to that, but we have a relationship with the building trades where they're already supposed to be doing our own maintenance, but the chancellor could speak to that.
And then I think your other question, with regard to paid internships? We do, and I'm, thank you for the question, because we are actually in the process of hiring one of your students from Laney College.
Thank you.
And our office is right on 12th Street.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. I was surprised that Charles Neal wasn't here, but I haven't heard from him in a little bit, and so I'm not sure where our sustainability director is in the district. The model that you're laying out basically says that you're going to figure out a financing structure to develop sort of a stronger, sustainable infrastructure, correct? And the issue is, can you come up with financing to put in the energy savings?
Sure.
We had a presentation tonight where we're talking about going to the voters and asking for eight hundred million dollars of funding. Some of the funding that we've been looking at in terms of the facilities master plan actually has to do with these, these very projects. And so, what I'm trying to understand is, if you're going to go to investors and you're going to say, here, investors, put money into this, you'll make money over the long term, then there's money to be made here. If, if we just took our own money, our own bond money, and we, we invested in that, why would we go with you to do that? And why wouldn't we then just capture one hundred percent of that energy savings that the voters would have then supported?
Sure. And from our perspective, we don't finance the project, so it's not a profit center for us. So, you're right, if you have money to pay for it, that's perfect. You get all the savings back. But the reality is, when we talked to your master planning group, they told us that, well, we have needs of a billion dollars, and you're, we're going to ask you for eight hundred million. So, the option is that we can finance this and not impact, sort of stretch your bond dollars. But to answer your question, yes, we, we do know we can finance it, so we're not looking for people that do that. Institutions finance these type of projects.
And the only question then is, you know, we're going to get some energy savings here. We've been doing this for, as long as I've been in the district, investing in new infrastructure and then taking the savings and then putting that right back into our general fund. So, I don't think this is brand new. I think this is actually, we've been doing this. Why wouldn't we just continue to do that if we anticipate, if we anticipate that we're going to go to the voters, get a big bond issue? Why wouldn't we do that and then capture all of that savings on our own?
And you, and you could, but, so, what we tried to identify, the projects that are critical to get done pretty quickly. And so, if you wait until you actually have a bond done, and we could actually do that. I mean, it, there's no reason we couldn't do that under bond dollars, but you have some critical needs that probably don't need to wait till November.
Could be, and would you be willing to share your business model so we could understand the profit, you know, where the profits are, how much are they?
Everything that we do is transparent, and we have, we have what we call a pricing model where we can show how we make money.
That'd be great. I'll share my information with you. I don't know if the rest of the board's interested in this at all. I, I focused on this for as long as I've been on the board, so I'm particularly interested. Thank you.
Great. And one thing I will say, I'll stop talking, but we do have a ongoing relationship with the Building Trade Council. We've signed our own PLA with them to be able to use local businesses. One of the things they have done is give us a little slack because Oakland's pretty stringent, Oakland K-12 stringent requirements for local and small business. So, anyway, I'll stop with that.
Might I ask that, if there's information that's sent, it's sent to the clerk or through the chancellor, so that, some of us have varying degrees of familiarity with the certificates of participation model that you use or that you have on your slide number eight?
Okay.
And those who would like to study that more closely would have an opportunity to, if they, if they would like a, would like a greater sense of familiarity with that?
Sure. And we actually have a report, we have a deliverable that, that we prepared with all the results. I just gave you some very high level look at what we did.
Yeah, it's not an uncommon municipal finance structure, so we appreciate, thank you very much.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing. We have a public hearing, sunshining of contract reopeners for negotiations from the district to the International Union of Operating Engineers, Local 39 for regular employees, and the presenter is Vice Chancellor Largent. I'll gavel in the public hearing. Vice Chancellor, Vice Chancellor, or Vice Chancellor Largent?
So, the public hearing is a requirement under the government code before the district can begin negotiations at Local 39. So, this evening, public hearing, and then we begin negotiations next week.
Thank you. And the items that are the, being sunshined are listed in the board packet. Vice Chancellor Largent, did you want to read those items that are being sunshine?
Okay, so Article 6.1 Management Rights, Article 7 Definitions, Article 10.3B Career Ladder Job Groups, Article 10.4B Filling of Permanent Promotional Vacancies, Article 10.8 Filling of Vacancies, Article 12.1 Hours of Work, Article 12.2 Annual Shift Alignment, Article 19.1 Performance Evaluations, Article 21.2 Temporary Transfers, Article 21.3 Involuntary Transfers, and Article 24 Health Benefits.
Thank you, Vice Chancellor Largent. I do think Article 12.7 was the annual shift alignment, yeah? Am I right? Okay.
Correct.
So, we, that will conclude the public hearing, sunshining, the negotiate, the items that are being negotiated with the international, international union, well, Local 39. The next item that we have on the agenda is our consent agenda. Do we have, we have a motion from Trustee Gonzalez Yuen to...
I'll second it.
And we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that motion passes. The next item on the agenda, or that item passes, I should say, is the, okay, let's go all the way down to the action calendar. Got to turn a lot of pages to get there.
Forty-four, yeah.
All right. I got it. The next item on the agenda is the action calendar, which is on page forty-four of this very long agenda. The action item we have is 12.1, Consider Approval of the 2018-2019 Peralta Community College District Holiday Schedule. And we have a motion to approve from Trustee Gonzalez Yuen.
There's a second.
And we have a second. Do we have any discussion on that item? Hearing none. I'll call the question. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries?
I should probably just roll call.
Oh, roll call, sorry. Action item, roll call. We're going to behave ourselves tonight.
Trustee Weinstein? Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Yuen? Trustee Riley?
Yes.
And Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Now, we have two more items. Board council, are we ready to do these today, or? Ready to do it? Okay. So, the two additional items on the agenda are Item 12.2, Consider Approval of Resolution 17/1844 Notice of Governing Board Member Election, specification of the election order for November 6, 2018. And do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Just on the first of the two.
Thank you.
Well, we'll have to do a roll call. Any discussion? I'll call the question. Hearing no discussion. All in favor? Oh, sorry, roll call.
Trustee Weinstein?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Yuen?
Yeah.
Trustee Riley?
Yes.
And Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
The next item on the action calendar is Item 12.3, Consider Approval of Resolution 17/1845 Tie Vote in Governing Board Election with Runoff Election. Do we have a motion to adopt this resolution? It's been moved by Trustee Handy, second by Trustee Riley. Do we have any discussion?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Yuen?
When we have an election, the district incur some costs, yes? And this would also be true if we had a runoff election. And so, I'm wondering, I'm like, look, when has there ever been a tie in a trustee election? But should there happen to be a tie in a trustee election, this binds us to actually spending a huge sum of money to do runoff election. And frankly, I just don't see any value in that versus flipping a coin and just letting it fall. Now, look, it's not going to happen because, but, but why would we, why would we commit the district to spending another, whatever it costs? And it's not nothing, you know, probably a couple, few hundred thousand dollars to run a special election. Why would we do that? What is the value in that?
I believe it's a statutory requirement, board council or through the chancellor?
Well, you could do it either way, correct?
We could look at it. I don't know that you can do, I, I don't know. We'd have, I'd have to research it. This is the standard language that comes from the county every year that the board considers, every election.
I'm just reading the language. It's the whereas, and it says, whereas, if there's a tie, it's either determined either by lot or by calling for a runoff election. We are choosing to call for a runoff election, and that just doesn't make any sense to me. Like, why wouldn't we do it by lot if we could save a few hundred thousand dollars? And it's pretty arbitrary at that point. Now, I fully realize that this is never going to happen, but as a matter of policy, is there any logic to saying, yeah, let them duke it out again? Because it seems to me like what we've learned in this state with the top two, you get two Democrats run against each other in the primary, two Democrats run against each other in the general, you've wasted a lot of money. So, I, you know, this isn't a partisan thing. I don't know who's going to not win. It just doesn't make any sense to me.
So, board council, do we have, it's my understanding that the ed code specifies the election process. Do we, do we have time to get clarification on this? Or, I should ask, do we have a motion on the floor? We had, we had, do we have a motion on the floor?
Yeah, I'll call a question.
I believe we can move this until June 26.
I'll call a question.
So, we've had a request to call the question.
But if I can add, I usually submit this, these resolutions during this board meeting every year, so it's something that I would have to confirm with Alameda County, but I assume that we are early, and I assume that we can move it until the 26.
I called a question, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I called a question.
All right, there's been a request for votes, so we'll go for a vote, and that'll be a roll call vote.
Trustee Weinstein?
So, is, are we voting for as is, the resolution as is?
Yeah.
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Yuen? Trustee Riley?
Yes.
And Trustee Brown?
Yes. One, one other question. We did not include our student trustees in the roll call. Could we do that, please?
That wouldn't be effective until the June 26 meeting, as it is on...
Oh, that's right. It's the first reading, not the second reading of the resolution.
Right.
My apologies.
No, no, it is the second reading, but it was, it's to be implemented at the next board meeting, so, yeah.
I forgot that language in the resolution.
The trustees will have both the ability to make motions and seconds starting at the next meeting.
And advisory votes. Okay, sorry, sorry, sorry. Just forgot, all right.
Okay, and thank you. Motion passes.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Consider Approval of Resolution 17/1846 Candidate Statement of Qualifications. We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Okay, I'm sorry. It was 12.4, Consider Approval of Resolution 17/1846 Candidate Statement of Qualifications. And we gathered a motion from Trustee Gonzalez Yuen. Do we have a second?
I think Linda's seconded, didn't she?
She asked. Is that a second? Okay, we have, we have a definite second now. Okay, so we've had a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion?
Question.
There being no discussion, I call the question, and Madam Clerk, can you take us through a roll call vote?
Trustee Weinstein?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Yuen? Trustee Riley?
Yes.
And Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
The next item on the agenda, the next item on the agenda is the Board of Trustees Reports. And we will begin with Trustee Weinstein.
Boy, by the end of the night, different than the beginning. So, first of all, it's fantastic to have gone to the graduations. It is with much pride that we see the students who have graduated, the faculty members who've worked hard, and the presidents who've worked really hard, and we thank them for the work that you're doing to help these students. So, I, I'm always amazed at the graduations, and so I really appreciate it, and it reminds me why we're here. So, that's one. Two, I want to say that a few of us worked on a fundraiser for the Dreamers and scholarships in both BCC as well as Peralta, and, and we've just hit over the ten thousand dollar mark, so that's, that's a big thing, and I'm excited. a big thing, and I'm excited about that. And then I will say that I was at the K, or I hope I have this right. Well, I very much appreciate the people who came tonight to talk about the radio station and how much they want it and what it means to them, and I'm glad that we're doing it. And it was really very inspiring to hear that, so that was, made me feel good. And also, I did go to the PBC as an observer, and, you know, I will say that everybody is passionate. I was there as an observer. Everybody is passionate about the budget, and I know how so many people maybe feel heartbroken because they didn't have a say in the budget cuts, and I hope that that will change for the future. And I hope we can work on recommendations that will be given to us from the different groups and that we'll be able to weather this storm together. Thank you.
May we have our newest trustee?
Hello. I have no report, but I'm grateful to be here and serve my students and my district and my community, and I look forward to working with you all and having a productive year. Thank you.
Trustee Handy?
Hi, everyone. It was an extremely busy time. We had five graduations in one week and managed to get to all of them before taking off to New Orleans where I attended INCOR, the National Conference on Race and Ethnicity. Small group, 3,800 people from colleges all across the US and some international, and many from our local colleges as well, where all of the issues about race, facilitation, skills, people like Tim Wise that you all know of, Dr. Joy DeGru was there for pre-conference, and people just kept begging her not to stop. She's the one who wrote Post Traumatic Slave Syndrome. So it was an incredible, very, very intense conference. As I was explaining to someone, it's one thing to be there and you're excited to be there and you're sitting in your sessions, but when you, day after day, of seeing data that supports what you have experienced all your life as a person of color, it gets to be very difficult in the end. And the last session that I attended on that Saturday was the one that, about how trauma is in your DNA and how it takes generations for that, for that to heal. And at that point, I decided, okay, enough, I just couldn't do anymore that day. But I highly recommend it. There were also other people from Peralta that I didn't see into the airplane ride, on the airplane ride home, but I've asked that we find them all so that we could maybe come back and just give you some snippets of the materials that are out there, the information that was out there, and the data that is out there. So looking forward to doing that. And another thing is, this weekend at the Oakland Museum, I'm going to be attending Rural Trust event, Healing Justice Virtual Reality. It's an interactive experience related to the prison pipeline, justice, and healing. Truly interactive viewings beginning at 3:00 PM and run every 20 minutes. There will also be facilitated dialogue, and they will also be showing their film again, which also premiered at INCOR, which is called Healing Justice, on the restorative justice process. And the film really speaks to, actually, our children speak through this film about their experiences and how the system sometimes fails them and how they end up in the system and how it just continues and spirals on. So if any of you are available to attend that event, I think it's life-changing. They have proven that minutes in a virtual reality situation can change a person's complete biases and racism. So I'm looking forward to having this opportunity to engage in that, and if you have more questions, you can ask me about it later, but anyway, thank you. Oh, and one more thing. One of our students, Adriana Bouillen, who's graduated, and Brianna Rogers, also graduated from Cal. Adrian was one of our student trustees, but he also wanted to, just to give a shout-out to Ms. Toni Cook, who I understand gave her retirement party herself today, trying to slip out the door because we keep pulling her back into the fold. So if Toni is actually gone, she will be missed, but there are just not enough words to express her contribution to Peralta. And just shout-out, Ms. Cookie, we love you. Thank you.
Trustee Riley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just briefly, I want to thank all the colleges for the outstanding graduation activities. The speakers, both locally and nationally, were just fantastic. The crowds were fabulous, and I want to thank the, those valedictorians that got opportunities to speak, just very moving. I mean, it's, when we sit up here in our club and try to do the business of our community, it really is, makes it worthwhile at the end of the day when we can show up and see those who come by and tell stories that they dropped out of school and continued their life, their life story, and now they're, you know, getting a full ride in mathematical engineering to find, some of the finest schools in this country. So I thank you, and I know it's tough work, but I appreciate your service. Thank you very much.
And Trustee Gonzalez-Huon? And student trustee?
I don't have a report tonight. I do want to say thank you to all the students that voted for me to be student trustee, and I do not take this lightly, and I'm going to do my absolute best, and I look forward to working with everyone here, and I know that I'm going to learn a lot. So thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. And I would also like to congratulate the graduates and the support that they had from their administrators and their faculty and the staff was amazing, and their family and friends. Five graduations, that's the happiest part of the year. It's really fulfilling to see that. I also had an opportunity to look at the beginning part, to go to one of the Super Saturdays and see the students helping each other and see the people working together. It was, it appeared to be run almost entirely by students. It was a really beautiful thing to see, the students helping each other, and it was calm and nobody was freaking out like I used to when I was trying to register for classes. So I thought it was a very, very positive and supporting, supportive thing to see. And Trustee Handy and I also had an opportunity to attend the Unionist of the Year Dinner, and that was also great, to see our community working for, to support working families. So a lot of positive things.
I am remiss, I forgot to mention College of Alameda's fashion show. Just off the charts, we ran from the African-American graduation right over, I was running to Alameda, Dr. Burns was running to Merritt, Dr. Karas was running over there. I'm telling you folks, it's like Project Runway. Every year, it just gets better and better, and I do believe they were filming. If you have an opportunity to see the incredible garments and lines, and some of the lines were so fabulous, and people from Levi's and other manufacturers were there, and I remember one line came out, it was so incredible that the lady couldn't even sit up. She got up and went backstage because she was going to grab that student before anyone else had an opportunity. So to OJ and Derek, they have just done an incredible job of keeping that program and building that program. Even when we went through cuts, they anticipated, and they took on all of the work themselves, and they just worked very leanly, but they never, the students never really realized how draconian the cuts were. And to see what they have been able to accomplish now, and I'm hoping that we can continue in the future to support them and do reach-outs to different organizations so that we can make sure that these students get their internships and the connections that they need. Because actually, the garment that I'm wearing is from one of our students, Stella Karakasi, who graduated from the College of Alameda program. And then there was one other graduate from that program, Linda Handy. Yes. Okay, thank you.
This is yours, though, right?
Oh, no, sure, sure. Madam Chair, I just want to, Madam Chair, I just want to share with our community that I received this from Dr. Herb Kitchen, longtime Peralta, and Paul member Leonard Leep passed away. His funeral service will be held on his coming Thursday, June 14, 11:00 AM, at Fouché Hudson's Funeral Home. So just want to keep our prayers with his family. Thank you.
Do we have any announcements?
Yes.
The June 24, I'm sorry, the June 26 board retreat has been changed to a regular board meeting. Madam President, that concludes the announcements for this evening. Congratulations again to our graduates and our new student trustees.
And for our graduates who graduated two years ago, who just graduated from Cal and continue to come and give again our babies.
And thank you to our college presidents for having such wonderful graduations.